All right, we're going to open the meeting with a pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence. Welcome to the town council meeting for January 20, 2013.
Pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's time to take a moment of silence. I just take a moment of silence to reflect our duties here as members of the town council and remember our soldiers home and away, veterans and first responders. Thank you. In accordance with Mass General Laws, we are taping the meeting. Is anybody else taping the meeting? All right. Public comments, we have none. Council comments?
Yeah, I'm going to make a couple. Basically, this, you know, the last few weeks, we've all gotten communications and so forth. And I know we, you know, I'm not going to beat a dead horse regarding the trash pickup. That's, you know, of course, I think that's all behind us hopefully. But I've received a number of emails, calls and so forth. I just want to just hit a couple of bullet points. Nothing we're going to be voting or discussing at the, you know, in too much detail, but at least acknowledging the constituents that have raised the questions. A couple constituents have asked, they said, when are we scheduling our annual review of the town manager? These are people that have been on the charter commission, and these are both working independent of each other. And for Article 3, Section 1.5, and that's something I think we, we have to do. I mean, it's, you know, talk about the pros and areas of improvement, areas that, you know, exceeding. But it is something we are commissioned to, and we should definitely have it in a future meeting. So I'll leave that up for those that are scheduling to, to put that together, unless there's a reason not to. The other thing is, I received a communication, and it was a copy of a letter dated the 13th of January from the labor attorney for the town of Hamden, given to their police union, giving notice of intent, of the intent of assuming our dispatch functions of the town of East Long Meadow. Suffice to say, that read, you know, some of the police officers were just having questions and so forth. So I thought it was appropriate. I've already talked to our vice president, Mr. Kane, and, and he's anticipating that I was going to bring it up. And I think, Michael, you wanted to talk?
The only thing I can say, and then I'll pass it to Denise, is that we, we voted as a board to give Denise the authority to be able to move forward in conjunction with our chief of police and fire chief to coordinate a possible merge with the selectmen in Hamden, their chief of police and their fire chief. And I don't know if you want to elaborate on that.
So this letter was, it was a Hamden letter from the Hamden police officer?
It was a Hamden letter. It was, it was sent from their labor attorney to their union advising of the intent. And it also talks, there's a lot of contingencies and, you know, an inter-town, our inter-town relationship between us and them and so forth. I'll, I'll share the letter.
Yeah, please. But it does-
But it wasn't addressed to us. It just basically-
It doesn't impact us in any way. We've already, the chief and I have already had a number of discussions with our police union-
Okay.
-and have addressed their concerns. So there are not, you know, there are no issues on our side.
All right. So basically, just so the public understand, is that if this goes through, the dispatch for us would end up being in Hamden, and there would be a dispatcher-
Correct.
...at the new police station on Allen Street.
Two dispatchers.
Right. And how would that impact our current police officers who are serving in that capacity? Will there still be somebody at the station to greet people?
There will be somebody at the station. It will not be a police officer.
Okay.
It'll be a civilian person that could call in a police officer if they're needed, or dispatch from, you know, dispatch over to the dispatch. So, so there, there is a plan in place that really has not changed from when you all authorized the beginning of that. The only changes were that we went, we started with a, I inherited a six-town regional dispatch idea that started to crumble. Then we went to Chicopee, which was a four-town dispatch proposal, and we waited for the funding from the state. And when we only got partial funding, very partial, I think it was a million out of seven or something, from what I remember.
One point three out of nine.
Yeah.
That's partial.
So, so we said, we can't, we can't take on that liability over a number of years, and approached Hamden, Hamden approached, you know, we, we both knew that this was a possibility, and have been working toward a concept of, you know, let's try it. It'll, it'll be something that can be easily unwound if it doesn't work, but something that we expect will be a first step that we can then invite other towns as well.
So this April date that's in this letter is just, is very ambitious, to say the least?
Uh, no, it's likely that we're, it, it is ambitious, certainly, because we have to put an agreement together. It'll be an inter-town agreement rather than a big, giant regional dispatch document. And we're actually meeting next week about the, the numbers. But the concept has not changed at all. It's just gone from a large six-town that has a lot of issues, trying to get six towns to agree on something, down to now it's just the two towns. So it's been a painful process, but nothing different than it was originally as far as regional dispatch, no dark station. Our officers are going to be doing what they're hired to do, which is policing. And they prefer to be on the street, you know, doing what they're, what they're signed up for.
I'd just like to add one piece to that, too. Regardless of us getting together with Hamden or not, we've already allocated funds to have those officers put back on the street and hire civilian dispatchers.
Fair point.
So civilian dispatchers are in the near future.
That is our, right. That, that is our final, if, if we can't make it work with Hamden, our final approach will be to go civilian dispatch in-house. So that was the council's last year decision was to go to civilian dispatch.
Budgeted, right.
All right. Two, two other concerns that have come up since our last meeting. Where do we stand with the Conservation Commission? I guess the Conservation Commission is running to the point where they can't even hold meetings.
It's in my report.
It's in your report. I just got it as I came in, so I did not see it.
No.
All right, so I'll, I'll defer on that. The other one is just to let the public know, our Board of Health is holding a public hearing on February 8th at 6:00 in the media room here in the council on aging. Now, the purpose for that, on its surface, it's, it's, it seems like it's merely just to raise the age to consume tobacco product, or sell tobacco products, to 21 from 18. But I encourage our citizens to read the proposal, and if you have any concerns, to attend that meeting. It goes into the points, I mean, you know, through, through the president, anybody else wants to chime in. But it's, it's a rather broad restrictions. Some of them include the cost of a cigarette, a cigar, can't be, you can't sell cigars for less than $2.50. And there's some others descriptive stuff. So again, the purpose is to raise the age to 21. The question I want to ask town council, if you were here, and I just got this opinion on the other matter with the Board of Health, is, and perhaps Denise can help me on this to a degree, is if a business came in and said, I want to sell cigarettes, does the town have any type of licensing requirements for the sale of tobacco products to town?
No.
Or is that all done through the state?
That's all done through the state.
Okay, so, so does, this doesn't step on our licensing authority?
No.
Because recently, I was talking to Kevin just on the onset of this meeting, there was an article reminder that the city of Springfield, city council just voted to increase the age to consuming, to purchase tobacco to 21. Now, what I want to ask town council is, because they have an ordinance, does that put something beyond, beyond, to the point of the Board of Health where the city council gets involved? Or are we along the same lines that if the Board of Health says, okay, this business now has to wait, you know, somebody has to be 21, here's what you have to, you know, if you're selling a single cigar, you have to make sure it's at least this price point and so forth? Is that something that then falls into our category, into us, that we end up having to, to endorse the bylaw somewhere to Springfield? And that's, I'm just trying to distinguish between our community and their community. Is it, is it a function of an ordinance, or is it a function of one of our duties?
The function for them is actually a health regulation, which is granted to them under general statutes, and then the function of an ordinance would be the same as if you changed the bylaw.
So-
So because Springfield went with an ordinance, the council, city council has to do their ordinances, just like we would have to do a bylaw. So because it's a health regulation and not a bylaw, that's the split.
And, and it's similar to what, what, in fact, you're doing tonight on marijuana. You're, you're doing a general bylaw. The, the original one was a health regulation. So the health regulation fell under the health department, and the bylaw falls under you all.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
If I may make a point, I don't, this, all these items aren't on the agenda, so I don't think we should be having a discussion on it.
No, I just wanted to-
I just wanted to bring it out.
I realize you can stay here.
Because we would not-
We're having a discussion on it, and that's-
We wouldn't have a, our next meeting is scheduled for the 13th, and I, you know, and I don't think the public is aware of these public hearings. And I just wanted to make, make that point, because if I brought it on the 13th, it'd already be, you know, water under the dam.
Anybody else got comments?
Nope.
Denise, you're up.
Okay.
You're done, right?
I am.
Sorry.
Good evening, everyone. If you haven't been on the second floor of the town hall recently, the building department is now upstairs. The planning department is now over with the, with the public works department, and it seems to be working well. All of the part-time inspectors, electrical plumbing, they're all upstairs. And it ended up being a pretty big department, and planning was just two people, so it was easy to absorb them into the, into the public work side. That frees up the space down on the first floor where the building department was, and the, the accountant's office is going to move into that general area with the treasurer and tax collector. And our friend here, the clerk's office, is going to be moving to the accountant's office. So that'll be a nice, a nice flip of space. We gotta keep those public works guys moving furniture. It's just, poor guys. So it's, it's-
They're built-in fitness.
Yeah. Up and down the stairs with, not so great. Through a survey conducted by the library board, the most requested service was for the library to be open on Saturdays during the months of June, July, and August. So they made that part of their strategic plan, and beginning this year, this summer, they're going to have Saturday hours from 9:30 to 4:00. And it's not going to impact personnel. They're, they don't have to add personnel. They're just moving stuff around. So job well done by Leila. Fire chief, human services director, and I have made great progress on the firefighters' union contract. The town employees' union and the police union are, are just starting, and I've asked the public works union to extend their contract a year to create a little bit of staggering of the contracts, because having four contracts all expire at once is, is a lot for all of us to handle, really. The director of finance and I are finishing discussion with department heads that have capital requests this week and should be making recommendations to you all shortly for the coming budget. Attached is a legal opinion regarding the often asked, debated question about the Board of Health's authority as it relates to the new charter. If you'd like, I can read that.
That'd be good.
From attorney Kevin Maynard, authority of the Board of Health, to Denise Minar, town manager. You've asked us for an opinion regarding the authority of the town's Board of Health to adopt and enforce regulations, require and issue permits, and issue fines for violations. We've reviewed Mass General Laws, the town charter, and the town's general bylaws, have reviewed some of the relevant case law, and have spoken with the senior staff attorney at the Massachusetts Association of Health Boards. Generally, the town's Board of Health has broad statutory authority under the Mass General Laws to act as a regulatory body to adopt regulations and require permits that are reasonably related to the health and the, of the town's citizens and not prohibited by or inconsistent with state law. Mass General Laws, Chapter 111, subsection 31, provides that a local Board of Health may make reasonable health regulations, and describes the process and notice required for the adoption of such regulations. As long as there is a rationale, connection, rational connection between the Board of Health regulation and public health, the regulation is within the authority conferred by the statute. The charter does not include specific language regarding the authority of the Board of Health. It does provide, however, that boards and commissions established under this charter shall perform their functions and duties in accordance with the Constitution, general laws, bylaws, and this charter. Article 5, Section 3. The Massachusetts Home Rule Amendment to the State Constitution, Massachusetts Constitution Amendment, Article 2, Sections 1 to 9, grants cities and towns the authority to adopt, revise, or amend a charter. Article 2, Section 2 of the HRA limits the town's autonomy by requiring that charter provisions shall not be inconsistent with the state constitution or laws enacted by the general court. Section, Section 6 of the HRA provides the towns, that towns may, through the adoption of local bylaws, exercise any power or function which has been conferred upon it which is not inconsistent with state statutes. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 43B, Section 13 codifies the provisions of Section 6 of the HRA by providing that any city or town may, by the adoption, amendment, or repeal of local ordinances or bylaws, exercise any power or function which the general court has power to confer upon it, which is not inconsistent with the Constitution or laws enacted by the general court. The town's charter designates the town council as the sole legislative body of the town, Article 2, Section 1, and provides particularly that acts of the town's council, town council that provide for a fine or other penalty, or that establish a rule or regulation for the violation of which a fine or other penalty is imposed, or that establish a fee not set by, by statute, require passage of a bylaw. That's chapter, charter, Article 2, Section 7. These provisions suggest that the charter purports to limit Board of Health to acting solely as an administrative and regulatory body, acting to advance policies, requirements, or prohibitions established only by the enactment of bylaws or other acts of the town council. As stated above, however, Section 31 of Chapter 111 states broadly that local boards of health may enact appropriate health regulations, and this grant of authority has been consistently construed to include the authority to impose fines and other penalties for violations. It appears that the town may not, through its charter, say that the Board of Health may not do so, by removing such authority from the Board of Health or regulating it, relegating it to the town council as to do so would be inconsistent with state statutes. As the HRA provides in Section 2 and 6, such purported action by the town would seem to be outside the powers granted by the HRA and preempted by state law. Therefore, it appears that the Board of Health's authority to enact regulations pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 111, Section 31, including the implicit authority to enforce them through fines and other penalties, cannot effectively be taken away by the East Long Meadow Charter. According to senior counsel at the Massachusetts Association of Health Boards, this proposition has not been tested in any Massachusetts court. It appears that permit fees are also within the statutory regulation, regulatory authority described above, although the Board of Health would be well advised to have town manager as appointing authority confirm the appropriateness of permit fee amounts. I note that the charter provision at issue, though likely not effective with respect to Board of Health regulation, may be effective in other content, contexts, and may be enforceable in those other contexts. See Charter, Article 9, Section 4, regarding severability.
Thanks.
That was a mouthful.
That was a good finish.
Back to my report. Where was I?
Yeah, I missed it at the beginning. Can we go back?
Trash, trash, trash. Need I say, need I say more? Thank goodness, it appears we are caught up with the trash issues the town experienced in the last few weeks. In doing some checking on other communities, both Agawam and South Hadley also experienced similar problems. Both communities also have a public services as their trash company. I want to thank the residents for their patience, the major, the majority had for, for the inconveniences related to delayed, snowed on, piled up, blowing, and frozen trash. I heard terrible stories, people dragging it back in because they missed, they thought they missed it, and then the truck came the next day and they didn't have it out. People with trash so frozen that they actually brought their barrels into the house to thaw it out because they were so desperate they wanted their trash gone. And really, the majority of people were extremely patient. It was a full-time job with all three secretaries in our area, just answering trash calls. It was not, not a great, not a great time for any of us, and I think we have the trash company's attention, and, and I don't think it'll happen again.
So for those folks who might have brought it in and then inadvertently missed the truck the next morning, I would assume this week is still, like, picking up the loose ends?
It, if there are.
Would there be latitude?
Yes.
For those folks?
Yes. At the, we actually gave away green bags, and last week, they took trash in other than green bags to just get it done, because the piles were gigantic in some places. It, it was really, what happened was very unacceptable. It's not printed in my report, but I do want to tell, in, in relation to the Subcommittee on Communication, one of the things that, that I've been doing is with each department head that I'm meeting with, stressing to them to brand everything with our website, start posting to the website, see if you can do some frequently asked questions, a section of FAQ, so that, so that people start really depending on the website for information. Because although you're, Don, you were saying that the Board of Health public hearing is, is not really noticed that much, if people go to the website, a lot of that stuff is there, and certainly that's there. So we can only advertise so much if, if people don't look, then, so we've got to try to get them to start thinking, ah, I can go to the website and get that application. The building department, we're converting all of their forms so that they can start, people can start accessing them online. We're going to be doing that more and more. I had the first meeting with the new recreation director, Donna Prowther. If you haven't had a chance to meet her, stop by. She's delightful. She certainly hit the ground running by attending a number of town events and reaching out to many of the organizations to introduce herself and start seeing who the people is she's going to have to, to work with. Within her first month, she also began discussions with her current staff. She showed me the, she brought, our first one-on-one was last week. She brought these forms where she had asked each staff member, what do you do? What do you like to do? What do you see yourself doing in the future? And she's also working on the overall picture of the department, and had something, I can show you all what it is. She's very organized. She's very energetic. I think, I think you're going to see some good stuff going on there. She's definitely had, she definitely has a go, a can-do attitude that's really helping the department move forward this year. So. The drone that was authorized in, in the current budget has arrived and was actually used at, there was a big Hamden fire, maybe about three weeks ago. It was used at the fire. I said, was it really needed? Well, we have to start using it for something.
Paid for, might as well fly it around.
So it was, it was helpful.
That, that house had a big, a very long driveway. The, the Hamden Fire Department truck was stuck halfway. So by using the drone halfway up the driveway, by using the drone, they were able to figure out the best way to get through up, up the hill to haul the hose up there. So it really was. And they knew exactly where the fire was coming from, so that they knew how to attack it before they got up there.
I know it's a few months out, but when we get to August for National Night Out-
Oh, it'll be.
Having Mr. Quimby or, or the police demonstrate, I think that would be cool for the kids.
Well, I'm actually offering a demonstration if you all want. When the weather's nicer, maybe we could have a demonstration as part of my report. We can go outside and, and he can show you some of the things it'll do. It's, it's actually going to be helpful for GIS, for Public Works, for the new town deputy superintendent, who's also a town engineer, you know, he's, it's gonna be, it's, it's gonna be a good, I was very skeptical. I, I was scratching my head why you guys wanted that, but I was good with it. Building Commissioner Kevin Duquette reported that he received $105,000 payment for building fees for the solar project that's going on in, on Denslow.
Roads.
So he's, he's a very busy man. Planning Secretary Donna Rao gave her notice a few weeks ago. So we're not only looking for a planner, but also a planning secretary. Also, Michael Carabetta has resigned from the Conservation Commission. If you know of anyone that would be interested in serving on that committee, please encourage them to contact me, as the committee is in jeopardy of not being able to make a quorum at their meetings. So I had somebody stop in tonight and, and give me the name of somebody that that would be, he thought would be a good fit. So I'm going to put an article in the paper, just looking specifically for that board, since, you know, there's statutory requirements there. If, if they miss them, things could have, you know, bad consequences. So that's my report, respectfully submitted to Denise Minar.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Denise will ask around as well, see if we can-
Yes, please. That's why I thought if I brought it up here, yeah. It's an important board. Doesn't meet every single month, but it's very important.
So can that, can there be, you know, a recruitment, little tidbit on the website for that, too?
Yeah, I'm gonna have March-
Social media.
For something to-
So you're actually, are you looking for one or two?
So you're looking for two?
Two members, yeah. I also, Carolyn must, yeah, Carolyn's happy face. She left this for me. March for Meals with Meals on Wheels. Join us in March as, as we raise awareness in our community with the importance of Meals on Wheels. Anybody that would be interested in delivering meals with somebody, I'm, I'm sure I'm going, gonna do it at least one time. It's, I think a couple of hours. Has anybody done it? Paul, you seem like you must have.
Done it.
Is it about a couple of hours worth of?
Yeah, more or less.
And somebody else drives, so that you can just-
I think that's a good, yeah. So we just contact this young lady?
I'm sorry?
We just contact Alicia Smith?
Yes. Yes. And it's a good community outreach thing.
I had a question on conservation. Besides Michael Carabetta leaving, who else left the board?
Left a while ago. Actually, Craig is here.
Craig?
Renee left in September.
Oh, Renee, yeah.
So how many members do you have right now? Is it three?
Five.
You have five at this time? And there's two vacancies?
Right.
I wasn't aware there were seven members on the Conservation Commission.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, on to the approval minutes. I'm going to abstain from both of these, but I'll entertain a motion to accept the, approve the open session minutes from January 9th. I abstain, so.
So moved?
Second.
It's moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll entertain a motion for the January 9, 2018 executive session minutes. That's submitted.
Second.
It's moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Subcommittees, well, communications, correspondence, and announcements, we have none. Subcommittee were at the social media, Subcommittee report, Denise?
Do you have a six?
I'm trying to go out of order.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You want to wait till I-
I can write you out the expression.
All right, we have a 6:30 public hearing. So I entertain a motion to take 9A out of order.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So the reason for this public hearing is to continue the second reading of the new proposed bylaw regarding license compliance, so it could be properly published in the local newspaper. The bylaw would prohibit or revoke any license to those businesses that are not in compliance- that are not in compliance with state regulations and town bylaws as well as owing prior municipal charges. Council members are Tom O'Connor, Paul Federici, Joe Ford, Kevin Manley, Don Anderson, Kathy Hill, and Mike Kane. At this time, I'm going to open the public meeting and ask the clerk to read the legal notice into the record.
The East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on January 23rd, 2018, at 6:30 PM in the meeting room of the Council on Aging located at 328 North Main Street, to address a proposal for the Liquor License Authority, LLC, and permit granting authorities of the town to deny or revoke any local license or permit who has neglected to pay any municipal charges and is not in compliance with the state building code, sanitary code, and town bylaws, including all health, fire, and police and building codes. Information relating to this bylaw is on file with the town clerk and available for review by the public. For the council, Thomas Florence, clerk.
Next time. At this time, we actually have to continue the public hearing because we have not posted it. It requires seven days of posting, so if anybody wants to speak on it now, they can, but there's really not much to speak on because we haven't announced it, so. So I'm going to actually entertain a motion to continue the public hearing.
So moved, and what date and time are we continuing?
We're going, we're going to go with the 13th, right Tom? The 13th at 6:30.
Right here, okay.
Here.
My motion is with that.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Don, you're up now, we'll go back into order.
All right. That's the master of the segue with that one, so thanks. We held, we held a Subcommittee meeting recently at the library, it was very well attended. We did add an additional member, Mr. Sid Starks is joining our group as well. So very happy to have him on board with, you know, the people. So what we talked about is we decided to focus on a particular project. And that's the new Smart 911. I mean, this ties into everything, it ties into what we, you know, with the trash information. I mean, we had our previous, in our public comments of our last meeting, you know, people weren't aware. When we had that Smart 911 send us information, I was the only person on my street that knew the trash was going to be two days later. My entire street still had the trash, and I tried my best to reach out to who I could reach out to and tell them, no, no, no. So it indicates to me that it does work when it's being used. Now, the one jaw dropper we had is, you know, one of our members is a police officer, Donny Kavanaugh, and of course, we have the head of the IT Department, Ryan Quimby. So I had them and I started asking them, I said, well, you know, with the name Smart 911, you know, and people are putting in if they have a dog in their house, if they have an elderly parent, if they have people. I asked, I said, well, you get a dispatch call, do you even look at it? And I found out, well, we didn't buy the module for the police department. And I said, well, Ryan, obviously I know I have the authority to tell them to go buy it. I said, well, find out what the price is, you know? And I, and then I, but then I said, you know, to Officer Kavanaugh, I said, if you had it, would that, would you be able to use it? And he said, quite frankly, no. Because the amount of time, our job is to dispatch, is to get people out there. And by the time we go into his module and look it up and so forth, then it might be, it might cause a delay. And I said, I think one of the things we've got to do is talk about this because, you know, when the company's name that we're buying from, Smart 911, you think, and you're putting this kind of information, you would think our first responders are getting it. Now there are, so we were discussing workarounds on it. Like for instance, you could print up, like while the people are going out, while the police is going out, and the person calls, you know, looks it up and says, hey, heads up, this person has firearms, this person has this, this person has that type of thing. Or on a quarterly or whatever basis, print a hard book of it. So they're going 123 Elm Street or whatever number, and they'll say, oh, I see some information here. So it's, but the concern I have is what message we're giving to the citizens when they use 911. The reality is, what they're really trying to do is have a community alert system. Because right now, all we have is robo-calls on old-fashioned copper lines. And I can tell you, this system does work. I'll get a text message, I'll get an email, and when it's being used. So we want to encourage people. I mentioned last week and apparently got picked up in the reminder about this. And the website address is simply eastlongmeadowma.gov. And on the bottom, you'll see a community alert system, and sign up for it. If anything, sign up for it merely to get this information. So if there's going to be a delay in trash, if there's going to be some other breaking news, you can get this information sent to you. If you want the direct URL, it's eastlongmeadowma.gov/Enroll, E-N-R-O-L-L. You click on that and that'll take you right into it. So again, I really encourage you, but don't get to the point where you feel that, you know, the branding company is called 911, it's not, you know, a specific East Long Meadow name that we came up with, it's just a company we're buying it from. Apparently, they're very big in colleges and universities and they're, you know, and as far as getting students that information. On this era of cell phones and so forth, this is something we need to tie up, tie into. One of the other things we talked about, and this is going to be a work in progress, so I don't know whether we need to talk to the IT Department and allocate resources to work on it, is our website. Our website does need work. Up till the last meeting, all we had was the news calendar on the bottom third of it, that's it. We had two open spots which have been replaced with public notices, okay? Click on that, it says, click for public disclosure notices related to town council and other town hearings. Then next is Smart 911 Community Alert System, we'll take you to that link. Now here's where the problem, the problem is, is that, like I'll get, I used earlier the example of the Board of Health meeting, all right? The Board of Health on the website, you hit click, and it takes you to a notice of the Board of Health meeting. But it doesn't take you to the meat and potatoes of actually what the bylaw is. You have to go a little further, click on that, and then go, you know, so it's not quite seamless. The other problem that we have is I also went to the reminder publication, I went into the classified ads. And a classified ads also has legal notices. So we have legal notices, three, a couple, you know, planning board hearings. We got the one with the, with Mr., you know, Mr. Heinz's request for a zone change. That's coming up in early February, and a couple other matters. But if you go to our public notices, all we have is a national grid general announcement. So we have to find a way that what we're sending to the newspaper somehow finds a way to get on our public notices. Another comment that was given...
Excuse me, through the president? It wouldn't, so who's the webmaster if it's not Mr. Quimby?
That's what I got to find out, that's what I said. I mean, this was the first time since the meeting that, you know, that I've noticed a public notice. And it does say, and other town hearings in here. And other town hearings. If it just said town council, that's one thing. But when other town hearings would mean, to me...
Anything. Well, to me, anything that is pertinent to being posted on the site has to fall to someone's purview. And if it's not the IT director, then someone within... Somebody's got to be, that's got, responsibility's got to be delegated. Because it's not only the cumbersomeness of the website, but it's also the population of current information.
Well, here, I'll give you an example. It's not, fortunately, you know, it's not on TV right now. But we, I am at the reminders classified sites. And it talks about public hearing notices and so forth. Oh, we have another one? So anyway, just to wrap up, we're working, we're working on that. I will encourage everybody to sign up for this matter and stay tuned at the next meeting.
Excuse me, Don, do you want to talk about the spotlight page? Because that's where these legal and public notices are showing up.
Okay, we just have to find the spotlight page to go where on the front page it says that's where you expect them to show up. So again, it's just tweaking.
Yeah, that's what Ryan Quimby did do the day after your meeting, so they are out there.
Real quick question, Don, how is this going to affect our seemingly new arrangement with Handen? Is that something we're going to need buy-in from on their end? Since they're going to be dispatching?
No, this is all just...
Oh, the 911? Yeah, the 911 thing is something that if we end up, we end up going into it, that's going to be something we're going to have to talk about.
That's not first responders.
Yeah, the dispatching thing is, we'll, I'll, we'll find out whether it's worthwhile and get more details, whether we can even buy it and then give it to another town. So that might be, and plus, it might be some information that's confidential to our townspeople, so. It's a, certainly we're in the infancy of this whole thing.
All right, so now we'll move on, then we'll entertain a motion to take 9B out of order.
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So the reason for this public hearing is to read the new proposed bylaw regarding municipal charge leans into the record for the second time. This bylaw will prohibit any business, businesses from obtaining a license or permit if the old municipal charge is greater than six months as compared to the current bylaw of 12 months. It's been advertised in the 116, 2018 edition of Springfield Republican and posted on the town's website and posted on the Clerk's Bulletin Board in Town Hall. Introduce council members, Tom O'Connor, Paul Federici, Joe Ford, Kevin Manley, Don Anderson, Kathleen Hill, and Mike Kane. This is a public hearing. This time, I'm going to open the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the legal notice into the record.
The East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on January 23rd, 2018, at 6:40 PM in the meeting room of the Council on Aging located at 328 North Main Street, to address a proposed bylaw amendment to Mass. General Law Chapter 40, Section 57 regarding license and permit denials by changing existing language on overdue municipal charges from 12 months to six months. Information relating to this bylaw is on file with the town clerk and available for review by the public. For the council, Thomas Florence, clerk of the council.
Mike, can you read the proposed bylaw into, please?
Sure. The collector of taxes or other municipal official responsible for records of all municipal taxes, assessments, betterments, and other municipal charges, here and after referred to as the collector of taxes, shall annually furnish to each department, board, commissioner, division, here and after referred to as the licensing or permitting authority that issues licenses or permits, including renewals and transfers, a list of any person, corporation, business, enterprise, here and after referred to as the party that has neglected or refused to pay any local taxes, fees, assessments, betterments, or other municipal charges for not less than six, a six-month period, as referenced in Mass. General Law Chapter 40, Section 57, adopted by the town on 5/4/1998. And that such party has not filed in good faith a pending application for an abatement of such tax or a pending petition before the appellate tax board. This is our second reading on this, and it's actually a function of MMA, isn't it?
Yeah. So at this time, the hearing's open for public input? Okay. All right, so at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing and we can discuss the matter amongst ourselves.
I can start off by saying that numerous, numerous council members, I believe Sarah, Denise, we all talked about this, and reducing the timeframe from 12 months down to six months seemed to work very well for the town.
I'm in agreement with Mike. I think the timeframe of 12 months is pushing this out way too far to bring it back some to six months, which is doable by the clerk's office with the staffing that you have, then I think that's a good win-win.
Any more?
I think there's a safety procedure in there, like if somebody's trying to sell their house unless they're running at a hard time, then they owe something. If they get approval through buyer's counsel, that they will be paying the back taxes, we can still, they can still get their smoke certificates and so forth. I'm just saying this for people watching.
Just, I'll add one other comment that Mr. Kane just spoke about. In 2016, the state came forward with the Municipal Modernization Act, which was a pretty detailed list of practices, business practices that were handed down to municipalities to pretty much streamline how a business could be conducted at the town and city level, as well as do away with some antiquated processes. And one of the recommendations or the leeway that was given to towns and cities was to be able to reduce the notice from 12 months to whatever the municipality felt was appropriate. And that did come up in our licensing Subcommittee. And as Mr. Kane said, we met with the Director of Finance as well as her assistant, Don?
She's the collector treasurer.
Collector treasurer. And after some discussion and listening to their views, we're all in agreement that that will work for our bookkeeping practices and puts us in a much better position for maintaining some control over situations that would get out of hand too readily if we have to stay with the 12-month period.
All right. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposed bylaw as read.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye. Paul? Aye.
Joe? Aye.
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 All right. Now we can move on to eight, license matters. This one thing, we do have a license matter, it's a one-day liquor license. Two of them from the same St. Pauls?
You skipped me.
Oh, I'm sorry Kathy, I skipped you. My fault, I crossed you off.
Hours of work can I...
Kathy, it was a great report. Thank you for that.
That's sort of to the point.
I'll be very brief.
I wrote you off, I'm sorry.
Actually, I can be very brief. The, at our last council meeting, you heard me say that the Licensing Subcommittee met on January 3rd to address some concerns from three licensees in town over the increase in the all-alcohol liquor license for their particular establishments. We took their concerns under advisement. One of the pieces that needed to be investigated relative to their concerns was whether or not the council had the authority to push an extension of payment of any increase in the fees into the next fiscal year. The bottom line is, it did not, it does not. And so Mr. Kane and I met personally with the point person for the three gentlemen and spent over an hour discussing the reasons why we had to stay put with our decision. It was a very productive conversation. I think the greatest benefit is the relationship building that occurred and the level of confidence that these folks have now in the fact that they can come forward at any time and express a concern and that the concern will be followed through upon. And so the bottom line is that the fee increase must be paid within this fiscal year. And we conveyed to them that if they were not in the position to pay it in full, you know, within a matter of days, then they should direct a request through the clerk's office simply to have an arrangement to have it paid by June 15th so that their check would clear by the 30th in order to have it fall into the present fiscal year. Beyond that, it's our understanding that all other licenses or licensees have paid their fees for 2018. And perhaps it's presumptuous of me to say this, but it appears that the matter is closed for the time being as it relates to liquor and beer and wine licenses. The committee will take a little bit of breathing room and then we'll reconvene, maybe perhaps in March, and review all other fees in town that fall under licenses. And we will, if we see the need to adjust those upwards, because they too have not had a review, not in 29 years, but it's a significant amount of years, then we will have recommendations to the council in place so that we can act on that well before June 30th so that going into the new fiscal year 2019, the town account, the Director of Finance can know what the receivables are going to be and submit her reports accordingly. As well as we can notice the holders of all these various other licenses that there will be a fee increase for January first.
Thank you, Kathy. Sorry I skipped you.
That's okay. I'll get over it.
All right. Now we're on to orders of the day. A is, uh, license matters. There are two one-day liquor licenses for St. Paul the Apostle Church. There is a light issue with the Thomasville certificate of inspection, correct? Certificate of Inspection, uh, Kevin Duquette in the fire department went out to inspect and there actually had some life safety issues at the premises, so.
At the, the hall where the event is being.
The hall where the event is actually being held. So they were advised that there were certain things that they needed to fix. I don't have a list actually with me of what, you don't have a list, right, of what they needed to fix? Yeah, so there's four. So there's four actual issues with our emergency lighting, fire alarms, extinguishers, and a stage curtain that's not labeled as fire-rated material. So we can approve them contingent on the fact that they fixed those. Uh, but I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention that those, they have not gotten the inspection certificate as of yet. But one of these events is the Fourth of February, which happens before our next meeting, so.
And it, does the, um, applicant understand that the fee is contingent upon these other recommendations? I mean.
The license?
Yes.
Yeah. Yep.
And just not to be Captain Obvious, but I'm assuming if they fix it for the Fourth, it's gonna be all set for the twenty-first.
Yes, yeah. Well, we get, I mean, and if they didn't get it fixed for the Fourth, obviously they wouldn't have the one with the man until the twenty-fourth.
Right.
So is Kevin gonna re-inspect this prior to the Fourth?
Yes.
He gives a motivation February second to get it done. February fourth is a certain football game he's trying to set up for, so he's.
He's got, he's got some motivation to get it finished, is what you're saying. All right, fair enough. Uh, so at this point, they have.
It's in a conditional approval. I have no problem.
Who's gonna oversee that conditional approval to make sure that it takes place?
Well, it's the building inspector.
Kevin.
Kevin Duquette.
Who's it gonna report to? Tom?
Tom. Yeah, it comes back to Tom. That's how we found out in the first place that they didn't pass, so. Uh, at this point, I can say that, uh, entertain a motion to approve conditionally on fixing the four issues noted in inspection. Uh, the one-day liquor license for St. Paul the Apostle Church for February fourth, two thousand eighteen, five to ten P. M. For a fundraising event. And then a one-day liquor license for St. Paul the Apostle, February twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen, five to eleven for a fundraising event.
Question, was there any requests for a fee waiver?
Yes, there were in both cases.
So that's incorporated into the question?
Yes.
So moved?
Second.
Move the second. Any further discussion?
I'll just note that, uh, one of the, um, points of discussion, uh, with the licensing subcommittee around one-day liquor licenses was that, um, the move from ten dollars to sixty-five dollars, um, also went around the fact that in some cases a waiver may be requested. And we would leave that to the, the, to the clerk to determine, uh, if the, if the purpose of the event was, uh.
Charitable.
Charitable, yes. Can't find my words. Charitable and, and helping the community and, or the greater community in some way, then it certainly was appropriate to waive the fee. And I'm happy to say that both of these events attached, uh, some very complete uh, information about the purpose of their fundraising, and they're both very honorable events. So certainly would agree to waiving the fee there.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Old business. Number one, amendment of Article Five of the Traffic Rules and Orders Regarding Parking of Commercial Vehicles. So there is a draft. To modify the traffic rules and orders. Mike, you wanna speak on this point or?
Um, again, we had a meeting. I think if, if we start off, for those of you that weren't here last week, there was a suggested, uh, statement on how that was going to read, and, and I can, I think it's fair to say that the, um, entire council was not comfortable with the way it was written. It was kind of offensive to property owners and contractors as well. So we re-entered discussions, uh, numerous council members, our town manager, our building inspector, and the chief of police, and came up with language that will protect residents so that they can have services rendered but not have our streets used to park commercial vehicles in. And do you want, do you wanna read this and?
I can read it in if you want.
Go ahead.
So, uh, move the town council vote to amend the traffic rules and orders as follows. A, we're deleting all reference to border selectmen and inserting a place thereof town council and by amending Article Five, by changing section five dash one N to read five dash one zero, or all, by adding new section five-one N that reads, "A person shall not park a vehicle that is used for commercial purposes on a public way for more than one hour. This section does not apply to a vehicle during the time that that, the person who is using the vehicle is rendering a service to a household or business establishment or during the time that the vehicle is being used for pickup from or delivery to a household or business." And it's amending appendix five, uh, that's six, by adding it at the end thereof residential streets or highways, "A person shall not park a vehicle that is used for commercial purposes on a public way for more than one hour. This section does not apply to a vehicle during the time that the person who is using the vehicle is rendering a service to a household or business establishment or during the time that the vehicle is being used for pickup from or delivery to a household or business establishment." Streets and highways located in said residential zoning districts are shown on the map. Attached here too, as exhibited, may apply here too by reference. Amendment, by adding a new penalty to the code chart of fifty-dollar fine code number twenty-three commercial vehicle residential district. So basically, and I know for everybody's sort of informational purposes, is we've looked at a lot of other municipalities that have this same regulation or similar regulations. And, uh, I know Long Meadow, Wilberham, Ludo, are three, uh, three of the communities I can mention that have it as well, so.
What I'm gonna suggest is that we table this to our next meeting. I know I'm gonna be, I'm, I'm planning on meeting with, uh, uh, Tom Wilson in the next day or two. And also, I guess I understand that, uh, Mr. Grimaldi, um, only received a letter yesterday about this meeting. Oh, it's on the next one to this?
That's a different topic.
This is separate. This, by the way, this is traffic rules and orders, and the other topic is a bylaw.
Right. Okay. So they're not part and parcel of each other?
No.
Oh, I thought they were like analogous.
No, no, no. The Grimaldi request is actually a zoning bylaw that we have.
And that doesn't tie into this?
No.
Okay, okay. Apologize then.
So at this time, I'll, uh, entertain a motion to approve the amended traffic rules and orders as follows, as read.
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move the second. Any further discussion?
Just the fact that this is a lot better than having them report to the police every time somebody does a job at someone's house.
Well, we'd actually looked at that, and it was like, kinda just, when we sat down and looked at it, we tried to make it as simple as possible without impacting.
That's why we solved it last week, right? Came up with a much better alternative for all parties.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just another question. Um, I went on our website and I did a search engine cer, within the website, and I just typed in traffic rules, and this didn't come up. Is this traffic rules? Is it on the website? These rules and regulations? I, I mean, I'm not saying.
I'll be honest with you, I don't know because they're so old that they're at the police department at Hardbound, like a binder.
Okay, so that's something maybe is again another future project that.
March is currently.
I think March retyped them all because all we had was a hard copy. I think she's just gotten done.
Okay.
Typing the whole book.
Thank you.
And getting it to the chief.
That was a concern to someone else. Okay, so eventually it's gonna find its way into our website.
Poor March.
Then we're moving on to number two. We have updated the request for John Grimaldi for amendment to the zoning bylaw three dash, three point zero nine-two, garage and parking of commercial vehicles. Uh, I know, Don, you're asking, you had asked earlier, we had a conversation about tabling this until the next meeting. The only thing I really have to say about it is not our, our purview. Uh, I will table it till the next meeting. It's, it's a zoning regulation which would be ultimately, I think, referred back to zoning for action.
Isn't, and I'm trying to make it Trump, but isn't that our purpose is to deem whether we think it's worthy to say that?
And so, Don, I just wanted to have this conversation with, with, um, some of the guys that are involved in the request prior to us making that referral. So I'm gonna make, I'll entertain a motion to table it for now until our next meeting on the thirteenth.
Well. Uh, is, is it our purpose, I mean through the chair, that our bottom line is after we discuss it, that whether or not it has merit to be kicked back to zoning?
Correct.
Zoning, yeah.
Yep.
For further review?
Yeah, they would take any action and then bring, then they would have to do their piece if that's so.
And then it comes back to us.
If they choose, then it would come back to us.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, it's bouncing ball going back and forth, but.
And I don't mind if we feel like there's some merits to, to delay it, but, um, I, I did have a chance to talk to John after the last meeting and, and was dealing with the flu last week, but I had a nice conversation with him, understood a little more about where he was coming from. Um, and, you know, so what, what would we be delaying it for one meeting?
How did your conversation, that's basically your conversation is probably gonna be with my conversation. So what, basically, you think it's just move it to the planning board?
Which is just something that's gonna fall into their purview anyhow. All we're doing is saying that, you know, that I understand where he's coming from. I tend to agree with some of the points that he's made. Uh, it was nice to have a conversation with him and get his point of view a little bit, and that I would support sending it down. You know, in the end of the day.
I support sending it to planning. I just wanted, Don.
We're, we're not, we're not instructing planning to amend it. We're just sending them to reviewing, which is all we're doing.
Correct.
And in that case, I would be in favor of making that decision tonight and not delaying it.
I, the petitioner, is it out of order just to ask, are you fine with us sending it through the, through you? Are you okay sent, having us, having this go right to the planning department?
Is that, we don't have that.
I'm just asking, I'm just asking his office.
It doesn't matter.
All right. I was concerned because you only got notice yesterday and this thing, but you're.
Noticed that we were talking about it too.
Right.
But not, we don't, we don't have the.
So I'm gonna entertain a motion to refer it to planning.
So moved?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll send it to planning. All right. So we'll go to C, new business. Discussion of a new general bylaw prohibiting the use, growth, cultivation, manufacture, and/or sale of marijuana for recreational use need somehow.
That's you.
After the recommendation from the Attorney General's Office and our interim planning director, may I recommend that we make this a general bylaw also as far as for policing? Currently, if it's as being just a zoning bylaw, the zoning enforcement officer, the building commissioner enforces it. Being a general bylaw, it can be better policed by our police department.
Well, actually, if we do this and just, 'cause I've done some homework on this particular piece as well, and actually I've talked to some other towns about it, uh, it turns into, one, if a zoning bylaw was challenged and overturned, we'd have the second bylaw, which is the actual town general bylaw to fall back on to say that we have this restriction in as well. It's not just a challenge under zoning that could potentially be challenged at court. Number two is that it doesn't put the responsibility of enforcement capabilities or whatever on the building inspector. It ultimately goes to the police department with their, uh, with their purview to, to do all the enforcement end of it. So, uh, most of the municipalities have done it at the recommendation of, everybody that's actually looked at a zoning regulation originally has also looked at the by, doing a general bylaw or ordinance for their city or town so that they're protected both ways, just in case one has a, a legal challenge as well. So that may be something that we wanna, this is just for discussion purposes really, but it would mirror pretty much the, uh, the zoning bylaw wording-wise, and it would just be added to the general bylaws.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah.
This has to do with commercial growing, if you will, for, for recreational use?
Yeah, this is.
This doesn't affect the fact, not that I'm gonna do it, 'cause I can't grow a plant.
You can still grow your house, Paul.
Okay. I'm happy now.
You get your twelve plants.
I'll be happier in four months, but I'm happy now.
That's the fourth time you've asked that question.
I know.
He's just getting his back straight.
You get forgetful too.
Thought you were getting your specs.
And hungry. You're the fuck's a twit, you sit here. So I guess we'll sit down and take a look at maybe some, some actual, uh, language and bring it back.
It'll be very similar to the, the zoning one. We can potentially have our first reading February thirteenth, second February twenty-seventh, and it become, it become a bylaw.
General bylaw. Charter amendment for Article Two, Section Six in the, uh, town bylaws. So, Tom, you can talk about this a little bit. This is, uh, the and or.
Yeah.
And or, and to or.
Right.
Right. So right now it requires us to post legal notices for public hearings, right?
Right, well, actually, it's for new bylaws. Seven, uh, uh, days before second reading, it's gotta be published in a newspaper. And based on the one with the licensing's bylaw, and able to get your license and, and abide by all the sanitary and building codes and not have any back taxes, that one was gonna cost almost nineteen hundred dollars. I was able to get the cross down to a thousand forty-five in the reminder. But if we have to put every bylaw, proposed bylaw into a, into the newspaper, it can really run up to pretty high numbers. And I, I looked at prior bills from when we were, uh, we had annual town meeting, and the reminder charged us two thousand five hundred dollars and twenty-seven fifty to put five thousand two hundred and twelve inserts into the paper. So we were paying twenty-seven hundred bucks at the annual town meeting. We can blow through that just in, you know, publishing a couple bylaw, a couple new bylaws. So, you know, it's, again, it's something for the council to think about. I, I mean, if we still wanna go this way, that's the way the charter said. You know, we can post things seven days before the second reading, but it is, it is gonna get pricey.
I think for the time being, we don't really have a choice.
Right.
Um, you know, we want, we wanna be compliant, but, you know, in terms of reaching people, like, you have to know that we're publishing it, you have to know where it is. It is such a colossal waste of money to, to publish that in that manner when we're working on modernizing how we're reaching people and the way that they consume information. So we don't have a choice. Let's do it. We, you know, I mean, it's not really.
Yeah, no, we have to do it now, but we wanted to discuss. If you look at the language, it says, eh, you have to do it on social media and in the paper.
Instead of and slash, and slash or, well, that.
Right, basically, if you change.
Or.
Just or.
Or.
It still gives you latitude to do it if you wanna advertise it or not to.
I don't think it's anyone's intent at this table to not disseminate information.
I would rather have.
But it's also, I don't think, our intent to follow the letter of the charter as it's written in that section and spend a thousand dollars a week every time there's, uh, or two thousand. And because we can't predict how, look at the changes we've had in eighteen months. We'd be upwards of twenty thousand dollars.
Right, with the chestnut tree not interrupt.
Correct. And we've got a few coming down the road, so.
Very long, yeah, so.
Can we, can we stay inside the law if we, if we continue as we do with something underneath that says, a full script of the text of the, the bylaw appears on the website? Would that work?
That's a great idea. But I think we still have to change the wording.
We do.
We changed the wording, but we go with what Kathy recommended. I think it's, it's a great solution.
And the way to change, and the way to change the wording, there's a whole nother issue here that I know people get worried about that, you know, maybe it looks like we're not, we're not, yeah, we don't want people to know. However, the way to change the wording is not sitting at this table, sort of. Tom and I have checked into how that wording is done, and through the Attorney General's Office, the advice is to put it on a ballot question.
Right.
So you can get into.
The council has to come up with the language.
Right.
And then we, we supply that language to the Attorney General's Office, and if they approve it, then it goes on the ballot for the June fifth election.
And what's our timeframe to do all that? Because there's always a drop dead date before it can get on, printed on your ballot.
Twenty-eight days before the election, everything has to be finalized by you and the Attorney General's Office.
So say May first.
So just for discussion purposes, is there were things that you looked at, and I know that we've experienced some over the course of time that we thought maybe could improve efficiency or.
It could tweak a little.
Tweak a little bit here and there because there's no major changes that really need to be done. But we need to have those prepared so that they go to the Attorney General's Office for approval, then put on the ballot for the town people to actually approve. So we wouldn't change really anything. We suggest the changes to, to go on a ballot, and that ballot would be out for the vote.
June fifth.
And then they have to be written in an unbiased manner.
Right.
Right.
And then published and.
Right, it'll all be done ahead of time so that people can read it.
Yep.
And they could decide if that's how they wanna change.
It'd be the right way to do it, because again, you know, the way that we're, we're gonna reach more people using other methods, and it's going to be free versus an unknown dollar amount on an ongoing basis. Some of these are massive. That was nineteen hundred dollars. We have a couple coming that'll be much longer than that.
Because you have charts and tables attached and, you know, a lot of rubies.
Right, okay, question. What would it cost us, if at all, just to pick the brains of the Collins Institute again on this? And to see whether, you know, because if, for what we're paying for an ad, it'd probably be a lot less. Just to say, okay, here's what we're thinking of. Like for instance, if it says and or, you know, and the public doesn't see it, like we're looking at here, I'm looking at the reminder and it has public notices and the other one isn't. Are we in effect confusing the public as opposed to having a steady stream saying it will be this, and it may also be this, but you, at least you have consistency that it'll always be on the website?
Well, that was the plan, was that we would always have it on the website.
Right.
And then.
And punch that in the town.
But is that gonna be compliant with, and I agree with what, what Kathy was saying, is put something in the, in the reminder, if that's acceptable, saying, go, see here, it'll be at the, and if you don't have internet access, you can always go to the library.
Those are things we'll talk with the Attorney General's Office about, just to make sure we're in compliance.
Right.
They're a higher source.
Certainly the Collins Center is a very credible resource. We've already proven that by their use in helping us get a town manager. But they cannot supersede or override the authority of the Attorney General's Office, so.
They're actually the ones that suggested this language, so, you know.
We've gotta go the.
Thought I would ask, you know. So it sounds, I mean, it sounds like if we go through the Attorney General's Office and get this on the ballot and get it passed, then we're all talking about social media, so through that social media, we could put these on there. And people, if they wanna get them, they'll get, they'll get informed that there's a new bylaw change. It's coming on your phone, or it's doing this, or doing that, and then, and then they know about it. Whether they wanna read it or not is another story, just like whether it's in the publication of the paper.
But if they read it in the paper, that is the same thing.
Right, right.
It just saves money. So that's something for us just as a general conversation to have. So if anybody notices anything and we wanna look at getting out there to the public for that ballot in March, we need to get it, uh, June, rather, we need to get it.
So here we sit in January, who's gonna take responsibility for this one?
You are.
Congratulations, you're a volunteer. I don't mind working with Tom to, Tom to.
And I would take this one a bit better, get it, get it, you know, not.
And I just wanna say, just in the last hour, we've, we've discussed a number of, what, for lack of a better word, stumbling blocks to our doing business efficiently for the public. That would be better served with a more user-friendly format on the website. So your committee, if they could really, you know, ramp it up and, and try to work through this so that when we have the kind of information that legally, we need to get out there, that we have a vehicle to get it, to really move on it, so.
Alright, so that's on to financial matters. So we are now looking at transferring five hundred seven thousand four hundred eighty-seven dollars and four cents from the town budget to the school budget, as referred to in the January two thousand eighteen executive session meeting with the school committee. So. Yeah. I'll entertain a motion to make that transfer.
On someone?
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving to second, any further discussion?
Yeah, I just think somebody was asking about, about that. And because our meeting before was, oh, you're gonna be discussing it, okay. Alright, I thought we were just going to a vote, alright.
Fine.
A, a vote is not needed at this time for that dollar amount. This was the estimate for the FY nineteen, so since we haven't actually approved an FY nineteen budget, we can't really vote to change the budget that hasn't been approved yet. So this was more of that, today's discussion, when we're talking about the budget and where we want to go, as you are aware, the school committee voted to outsource transportation. So in line with this, if part of your marching orders are for me and Denise to reallocate the portion of the town funds that are typically spent on transportation to the school department budget, thereby not showing that department to have an increase due to this, but just reallocating it in the budget format, that would serve essentially the same purpose because I, I don't know if that's the exact, exact number at this time for FY nineteen. Does that make more sense to everyone? What will need to happen possibly at a next meeting is for the town council to vote for the, myself and the school department to be able to sell the buses, because they are town-owned assets. So the school committee can't do that, but that would be an item that they will need as part of the negotiations as to be able to outsource, is to be able to sell all of those buses. So that would be something that I would hope would go on next time's agenda for, for you to be able to vote.
Sarah, when you say sell the buses just for the public's benefit, you mean to the collaborative?
Yes.
Not to, you know, a private party that just wants to come to our used bus lot?
Well, the, the hope would be that we'd be able to come to an agreement with the collaborative, and most likely they would be our buyers. However, we would have to sell within the best interest of the town to make sure that they get the best.
So who's determined the valuation? Who's negotiating with the collaborative?
The school, excuse me, Gordon Smith, Pam Blair, and myself will be working on undoing all of that for the set selling of the assets. We have inquired of one company already to give us an estimate of the value of them, but we are getting a couple of companies to come in to give us quotes on them, to make sure that then we, we know what we have to be able to negotiate with.
Sarah, if I remember correctly, that was given to you specifically, so you've asked for their assistance?
Yes.
Okay. So you're, you're spearheading this for the town, not for the school?
And the school, and so Gordon, who's the superintendent, Pam Blair, the assistant superintendent, and myself, we work really well together. And so a piece that they are doing with outsourcing the transportation, and so we are working together to be able to do that. But I need to then have the school, the town council vote to allow me to do.
Right now, from us.
What action do we have to take?
What does he need? They're asking for five hundred seven thousand dollars, we wanna give it to them. What is it that you need?
For, for line one, all you need to do is say, yes, please transfer whatever the town would normally pay to the school side in the budget, so then it does not appear that they have an actual increase, it's just transferring it. And that's all you need to tell me to do.
Just, we don't need a vote on that, we just need to tell you that.
Tell me that those are my marching orders for what you wanna see, and that is what I can do.
We talked about this at another meeting already, why are we here now?
And will you tell us what that number actually is, when it actually is transferred, you know, what that amount is?
I can give, yes, I can give my best estimate, yes.
Wonderful, alright, that was easy.
So are we able to move on to the next?
Sure.
Yeah.
It's still you, though.
We are, we are at the point of discussing financial a little more in depth and get ready to put our budget together. But we need the council's feedback on, on where you feel we should be heading for this year. Any priorities you feel we should be addressing? Last year, we bought a fire truck, we bought a drone, we bought.
An ambulance.
An ambulance, started the ambulance service, dispatch. So, so we need, we need some direction, and then there needs to be a meeting with the school board after that as part of the charter. So we're gearing up to bring a budget together.
What's your timeframe on this? Since this is the first time we've seen this?
Well, any feedback that you can give me tonight is helpful for me to further this along. And we want to try to give budgets to departments within a month or so, I believe, is our goal. As of right now, many of you are aware that the state hasn't released their figures. I believe that they're doing, governor is doing a release on that tonight. So the numbers for the state are what they currently have posted, which is the exact same amount as the current year. So those are going to change, and as they change, I will update the budget analysis to be able to show everybody, okay, what we're projecting. But some general guidelines are helpful to make our instructions to departments more accurate and where we're going. Because this will also help to determine the total amount of capital that we would have. So if I may, just explain a little bit about what you have in front of you. And that would then, if you have questions at this point, we can answer those. And then a couple of the areas where I'd like a little bit of direction to help make my current budget analysis better. So the first page that you have is the comparison of December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen to December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, of our revenues. So you can see that, if you look at the bottom, that the revenue total in two thousand seventeen, we had about forty-eight point nine-four percent of our revenue collected that we had budgeted and estimated. And as of December thirty-first of this year, we have forty-seven point zero-one percent. So we are very similar to what we had last year as percentage at this point in the year. Keep in mind that real estate bills are due February first, so we are expecting an influx. We did receive, some people came in at the end of December to prepay their property taxes for this quarter due to the tax reform changes. So right now, we are on track. One thing that we did have last year compared to this year is we did sell the tax liens. And so that brought in about five hundred thousand, just over five hundred thousand dollars worth of revenues to us that we did not see this year. The categories that I have provided here are the categories that are as part of your, the tax recap sheet. So if anybody were to pull up East Long Meadows Tax Recap Sheet, you will see that these three of it, that these are the same categories. To make it a little easier about why we're categori, why I'm categorizing it the way I am, because this is for the state reports. It also makes it easier for budgeting, okay? The next sheet that you have is the comparison of December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen to December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen for expenses. You can see that for two thousand seventeen, at halfway through the year, we had spent, we had spent seventy-eight point ninety percent of the budget. And as of this year, we have spent eighty point one zero percent, so we are very similar. Couple of the outliers that you will notice is education shows at ninety-six point seven percent. The reason being is that the school department encumbers or accrues all of their salary at the beginning of the year for all of their contracted people. So it doesn't count for a substitute, but it counts for everybody else. So that's why it gives the appearance that we've spent more, but it's all actually just in that encumbrance column. And so that's right in line where they were last year at this point. Another couple of items that you're going to notice in two thousand seventeen, we did have the town moderator account, the appropriation committee account, moderator had zero, but appropriations did have a little bit of money. And what that was, was the payout of the overtime related to the secretary who had to take the minutes. But it was an actual expense for seventeen, so that way then you can see it, even though we no longer have that this year. I'm just trying to think what else might.
Animal control?
Animal control is now part of the health department. But what happened in fiscal seventeen is fiscal seventeen, it was combined. So fiscal sixteen, the end of it, there was an accrual for six hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty-five cents that we had paid physically in July, so it shows up in your two thousand and seventeen report. So that's why it shows up on that line, but that department, all of its regular activity for seventeen was reported in the health department, and that's where it is also for two thousand and eighteen. So it's just that carryover of the timing difference. Does that make sense? And you will notice, um, most of the others are, are very similar to where they were last year. If anybody has specific questions on a particular department, please let me know, or please let Denise know, and then, then I can get back to you on it. I wasn't sure as to what level of detail people would want, or if you want time to digest. So I thought that this would be helpful to at least give you a higher level. And then if you have additional questions, I'm more than happy to answer those. If everyone's okay, I'll move on to the next form. So the next form is my preliminary, and I cannot stress enough, this is a preliminary first round. Projection, so we have the real estate and personal, we have in the left-hand column all of the descriptions. Then you have the FY eighteen approved budget, which would match the budget that had been approved on May twenty-third by the town council meeting. And then the FY nineteen projections. So currently, I am projecting, so, excuse me, fiscal eighteen, the approved budget, we estimated that we would leave approximately one point two million of unused levy capacity, that we were not going to tax to the maximum levy. If we allowed the expenses to be the exact same total dollar amount this year as last year, we would be leaving two point seven four-nine million on the table as unused. I'm assuming that is not what we want to do, since we are increasing our fire department and, and all those other kinds of services that we have all discussed in the past. So I did give an estimate here, if you were to do a one percent overall increase, a two percent overall increase, or a three percent overall increase. So you will see that the bottom number in bold is how much unused levy capacity we would be leaving on the table. So I don't know if that's helpful for you to say.
That is.
You know, I want to leave approximately what we did last year. Let's see then where the figure would come out to be as to what the tax rate estimated and, and how that would work out. Another thing to consider is, do you want to say, okay, overall, we'd like to see this? In the last meeting we had, you stressed your interest in increasing our capital and to focus on that. So do you want us to add, I don't know, to double the percentage that we were using for capital to increase that, and then in addition, increase everything else a certain percentage overall? Did you want to say, okay, a three percent and, you know, increase capital minimally? If you had any ideas there, that would be helpful in projecting this? Or if you want, you can just say, okay, I like that the three percent, for instance, is very close to what we left on the table for FY eighteen. Let's do the same thing, and Denise and I can meet and say, okay, based on what the requests are, this is what we think is the best option, and then we can come back to you with that. Does that sound like something that you would like?
I think for me personally, I need a little more data.
Yeah.
You've started to talk to some of the department heads, what, what are some of the big projects that are on the horizon?
For, for the capital projects?
Capital, well, yeah, I mean, if we're, if we're gonna determine, you know, what, what percentage we want to kinda go towards, and we're gonna have to have some sense of what some of the capital projects are gonna be and.
And, and, and we expect to, at the end of this week, we'll have all of those wrapped up and we'll start, we'll share that with you.
We do.
So that you have, yeah.
We do know that, as Denise mentioned in her manager's report, that a lot of the unions are up for negotiation for their contracts. So we know that there's going to be changes there that we're going to have to consider and, and bake into our, our budget for this year. I was thinking on my ride here, how I also have from last year what had been approved for the fire department at their phase-in. I can put that into here, the transportation that we just discussed, and say, okay, based on that, how would it look if we, we did things? I just didn't know if you wanted to, to say, keep it similar to what we left on the table last year and then work with.
To work kinda backwards from there.
Right, because since the governor's giving theirs tonight, rumor has it, it's going to be an increase, but I don't actually know for sure yet, so I just wanted any kind of direction.
He said it was a three percent.
Yeah.
So. Yeah. Yeah, that's what he said.
Yeah, I thought I heard three and a half.
And he was pretty, pretty solid with that.
And I thought there was a lot.
Positive for us, but still, I'm like, I'm trying to go through last year's commitments, and then I don't know enough about where we, where we stand on them, which, what department heads are gonna bring forward, what's their wish list. this year's projects and which, what department heads are gonna bring forward, what's their wish list, you know? And then, and then what was helpful last year is that you had each department head, had prioritize within, you know, each, each one of their owns as to what they felt like were must haves and, and, you know.
We saved it this year, you just not, you haven't finished the meetings.
Right, we, we have the school board meeting, we had met with them early on, but they hadn't prioritized yet, so that's, that's a biggie, certainly. Um, I think truly the departments have been very conservative, I, I'm finding this year.
I, yes.
Um, the, the discussions have been very reasonable and, and I think you'll be pleasantly surprised with what, what we've got from the departments. Some, some of it is because it was, I mean, the, the departments, some of them were kind of undone and just redoing. Recreation, for instance, uh, Public Works, the new, the new superintendent has a different take from the last one. So he's got different ideas on, on how things are going. So, yeah, a lot of it is, is, um, I, I'm just finding that they're really pretty reasonable requests.
Yeah, since I wasn't involved in getting the information last year, personally, I, I'd like to see what was submitted from the department heads and what's been approved by the capital committee.
Right, um, that's, that's my intent.
So will I get a complete list of everything that they submitted?
Absolutely, yes.
And the next, the second thing is, uh, I don't see anything in here with staffing. Um, one of the things I commonly get feedback on from uh, our constituents is, uh, the town seems to be growing and maybe in the wrong direction. And we have a large OPEB uh, obligation now and every time we bring on staff, it increases that obligation. So I don't see anything in here that tells us what the staffing this week's department, what the growth is. Is that possible again?
Absolutely.
Yes, that is um, one of the things that we typically request as part of the budget that we send to each of the departments. Um, so we can definitely provide what their existing um, staffing is, um, and then also give feedback to them.
I'd like to see the change, you know, what it was and what it is.
Sure, that's, that's easy to do.
I can think of the last year, I don't think we've grown our footprint all that much. I think in some cases we've eliminated a few positions or positions didn't get back filled.
Things have been changed around, yeah.
But it, it, the total number of employees, I don't think changed very much.
Whatever did change was just dictated by the charter, really.
Right, well, that's what I mean, but it wasn't.
Yeah, it, it was charter changes, but it's definitely gone up.
But there were some positions that weren't filled, weren't backfilled. Couple of positions were added in the school department, but not, I mean, when you say a lot, like, I don't think it went up a lot at all.
Well, I didn't, I didn't say a lot, I said they just were.
We've got more people in the office there.
Yeah, I'd like to see, I'd be curious to see what the net change was.
Yeah, absolutely.
I thought we discussed it and it wasn't.
It was a huge, no.
No, it's not huge. And really, the one person to, however many, some of those were shared secretaries before that are now dedicated secretaries to HR, for instance, is a whole new department.
Right.
And, and there were three secretaries in my general area, but they were dispersed. I only need one.
So with the other two.
We added the civilian dispatcher, we never filled the four and a half positions.
Right, right. And I mean, we recently filled the, the four firefighters, but they still have to go to the schooling. So they're not on our payroll yet, but it is a position that we filled. Um, and that small of a department, four, is a large percentage for that department, but realistically over the whole thing, it's not that many.
But we, they hired more, but also to your point though, they hired more like in, in the police department, but those positions, we were understaffed. People had left and they never backfilled them. So that's, I don't really look at those as net gains, those were, those were just kind of, to me, those were neutral.
Right, they're break even positions.
Right, because we had to, we had to fill them, they were, they had gone unfilled for years and then chief went and, and put people in the academy. So then they were what I consider to be properly staffed. But I'm doing it all from memory, so I'd love to see the, love to see it again.
That's, that's what this whole agenda item was for, to find out what it is you want.
So what period of time would you like me to compare? Because it's a moving target. So would you like to see from?
Last January to this January?
Yes, is that where you would like to see or, or something similar?
I'd like to see the, the change in the budget, uh, and how that reflects here. So if they went from three employees to four employees, obviously there's gonna be an impact on the budget. It'd be good to know that that's part of the increase in the budget, to know it's from the salary. I think that's important.
Okay, I think I understand.
If not, just guess.
Hmm? Just make it up? Well, some of it's a little harder.
January to January, you're fine.
Some of it's a little harder to do because my system doesn't tell me open position that's been unfilled for years, so I can just tell it's.
You can tell it's a new position, right?
Hmm?
You can tell the expenditure difference in salary.
I can tell that, yes.
So that's all we really need to know is we can look at how many positions we filled, like for police department, whatever. And something to take into consideration on that end is that what do we reduce in overtime? For us, it's like, what do we reduce in overtime by putting those there? Like that type of analysis is sort of, overall, generally, what are we spending more in salary? Capacity for departments where we made new positions.
Yeah, and something like the health department, all of those, those, like the, the positions are either grant funded or, or the fees paid for the.
Well, grants run out and then we have to pick up the obligation, so I, that's a concern too. I mean, grants run out and then we have a position where we have to either fund it or get rid of it.
No, 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 not for that one, no.
You can either agree to absorb it or, or release the, the, release the position.
Right, and so, so you want to know though overall, because you started off saying about OPEB, so do you want me to do for benefit only eligible positions?
No, no.
Or you want to know in total, okay?
Yeah, we had some injuries over the last few years.
Right. And are you able at some point also to define the bargaining units that are up for negotiation?
I have that.
Okay, we, we could provide that because we can confirm with the school because they have a couple too, yeah.
I have a question on expenses. Um, have we been moving, let's say at this point, since the beginning till now, are we moving more toward bundled purchasing? Or basically, you know, if you need X number of paper, the school department negotiates their own contract and then the town hall has its own? Or can we look into, or are we allowed to look into more bundled purchasing to save more economy?
Right, we are allowed to do bundled purchasing. At the school department, they do currently do it to an extent. Um, on the town side, we do not do that yet. That is one of the things that I would like to do going forward. Um, right now, I've still been just trying to fill all my vacancies.
No, I understand, I just wasn't sure if.
But that is, that is something that is on my goals, is to try to create economies of scale.
And does that change your accounting in any way? By saying like, you know, you're taking the money out of this budget and then this budget comes in, as far as like you buy?
Um, well, part of it is to also think through how we would account for it, you know, that is not crazy, you know? A couple of years ago, before I started here, there was an operational services department and it did stuff like that. Um, and then it was determined that to remove that department because then it didn't show just how much one department was spending versus another one. So I'm not quite sure how I want to.
But there are definitely ways to do that.
When you're moving in that direction, so like this time next year will probably, you, you'll probably have more, will be moving along the line and saying, listen, we're gonna be buying this and this will cover this department, this department, this department, and we can negotiate even better and get better deals.
Or get some of the contracts on the same thing, that kind of stuff, but, you know, it's, it will take time.
You'll get there.
We'll get there.
Work in progress.
We'll get there. Um.
Any other questions or suggestions or?
Go with two point five. Go with two point five, it splits the middle of the numbers.
Two point five, okay.
I disagree. Lower.
Split the middle of the numbers.
Until I see those, until I see those capital projects.
Well, they can make up a big piece of it if you want, it can be the capital projects. And we do have bonding capacity, you know, we talked about that.
We did talk about that a little bit.
We do have that and we do have the OPEB and um, I am hoping to have my free cash certified within a week or so.
Don't we have some um, significant um, bonding stuff starting to mature?
Yep.
Not quite yet, almost.
Couple of years, two years?
Um, twenty twenty-one, I think is the, is, is the big dip, is we pay that one and then the following year, you're gonna see a huge difference. Because I think we have a couple that come up then, if I recall on my analysis.
Yeah.
Is soon. I said there's the library project that should be falling off in this FY nineteen, yes?
I have to.
Well, it's close.
It's close, it's, it's very soon that we're, we're paying.
Only three years away.
What about Bursen?
Three years.
Three years away?
Yeah, a lot of them, but also keep in mind that some of those, like, like the ones you just mentioned, are debt exclusions as well, so.
So they don't affect.
It's, it's not as big of an effect as you think it will be.
Still nice to get rid of debt.
Oh, absolutely. But we, we are in a very good position that right now, that our debt that's due in the short term is actually very high and our long-term debt is very, very low. So we are in a very good position to bond this year, um, or in next year if we chose, but.
We have some substantial growth on our investments too.
Hmm?
We had some substantial returns on our investments too. I know the OPEB account, Tom, originally, what was the numbers, what was the figures on the OPEB account?
The growth of the OPEB accounts, finance, you know, in the market.
Two hundred and twenty-seven thousand in a quarter, which is. Full gold.
Here today, tomorrow is not, yeah.
At least you're making money off it.
Market crashes tomorrow, it's all gone.
Bitcoin.
Well, and it might be, it might be the time to bond because, you know, they're talking about inflation.
The bond rate's still pretty, pretty good, I think it's less than two percent.
The rate isn't bad now, but it could get affected by inflation.
But we had a good rating, so we should be able to do it.
Yeah, we should do better too.
Just checking my notes, if there was anything else I had to bring up. I think that's it right now.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you, sir.
All right. So now we gotta move to executives. Jim, you have executive session stuff for?
I do.
Okay, I make, entertain a motion, move to executive session. To return just to, uh, adjournment.
We're talking Italian.
Whatever.
That's some move?
Second?
Second.
All updated?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Hi.
Joe? Hi.
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 Mike?